All right, we'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for January 16th to order. If we could please take the roll.
Councilmember Delaney. Councilmember Whiting. Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Lara. Mayor Lehman.
Item number two, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three. Three A. Twelfth Avenue pedestrian safety. The CAPS student have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm excited to be before you tonight to have our CAPS students give a presentation on the 10th Avenue pedestrian safety study that they've been working on this semester. They'll give you a little bit of background about who they are, why they chose this project specifically, and what they did throughout the year. I'll say it was a pleasure working with these students. They were extremely professional. They were attentive, they're on time, and some of the cool stories that we have is they have zero interest in engineering, but I put them on an engineering project and they did awesome. So I'm going to introduce to you Lilly, Nicole, and Isaac.
Hi, I'm Isaac. I'm a senior at Shakopee High School.
If we could move you over to the microphone, please, that would be appreciated and welcome. Thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Isaac. I'm a senior at Shakopee High School, part of the Human Service CAPS program, which CAP stands for the Center of Advanced Professional Studies. And it's just to further our experience as high school students and getting real-world experience in the workforce.
My name's Nicole Manke. I'm also a senior at Shakopee High School, and I would just say that I think we chose this project because we all have an interest in human services and human relations, and we really wanted to make sure that we can make a difference and help our community.
Hi, I'm Lilly. I'm also a senior here at the Shakopee High School, and I would have to agree with both of them. We're here just to make a difference and help people out.
So to start, the purpose of the project was to study pedestrian safety, access, and connectivity along 10th Avenue, ranging from Harrison Street down to Marshall Road. The project is being evaluated, given the roadway's importance to the city. It not only provides access to downtown Shakopee, several collector roadways, but also houses three schools along its corridor. Over the years, community feedback has been shared with city staff regarding the lack of trails or connections along and across 10th Avenue. Additionally, improvements along this section of roadway were identified with the city's safe routes to school plan developed in partnership with Shakopee Schools. And lastly, the corridor is being evaluated as roadway improvements are programmed to be completed in the next five years.
And our project goals was to analyze the current roadway conditions along 10th Avenue, collect input from Shakopee residents, brainstorm improvement ideas, and present project results and recommendations.
These are some of the pictures we observed at the beginning of our project, just to look at what we were working with. So obviously, a crosswalk here, and then a stop sign that was already in place along 10th Avenue.
Some more problem areas we tried to highlight were the lack of a sidewalk on the northern side of 10th Avenue, especially in front of Sweeney Elementary. Then we also highlighted two of the current school crossing zones, and then also some of the existing sidewalks and what we would like to improve on those.
And our team worked with engineering staff, Alex Jordan and Henry, to install traffic monitoring tubes and counters to collect traffic speed and volume data at three locations. One was by Sweeney, one was by West, and one was by Pearson. As you can tell, our speed limit's 30 miles per hour, and we tracked it, and it was five to 10 miles per hour more, and that was the 85th percent speed.
The 85th percentile speed represents the speed at or below, with 85% of all the vehicles are observed to travel on the road. Engineers use the 85th percentile speed as a guide to set the speed limit at a safe speed, minimizing crashes and promoting more uniform traffic flow along the corridor. Most people don't drive according to the posted speed limit, but instead at the speed that they feel comfortable driving on the road. Roadway design elements that influence the driver's feel includes things such as the roadway geometry, the lane width, curvature of the roadway, slight obstructions, and just natural surroundings. When vehicles deviate from a standard speed, either faster or slower, the potential for accidents increase, so drivers are only going to go as fast as they feel is necessary for a road, and the current design of the road allows for people to just feel like they can go faster than the posted speed limit.
So our next step in the project was the public engagement portion. This is where we could use a lot of our interpersonal relationship skills, being in the Human Services Academy. We sent out surveys to both the general public, along with the schools and teachers and students within them. We also met in person with principals and staff members at both the schools to get their input and feedback from them. Our survey was sent out via postcard, as well as featured online and on the city's website. Our goal was to make it accessible for a wide array of Shakopee residents, so we received 101 survey results, and we found that 53% walk or bike on 10th Avenue regularly or daily, and 72% commute along 10th Avenue regularly or daily, showing just how important the road is.
And as Nicole mentioned, we did our Google Forms, and here is some of the feedback that we got. Driver compliance is an issue for yielding to pedestrians and stopping at intersections. The main themes we heard from the public were stopping compliance, lack of trails along the roadway, and the need for safety improvements. Specifically, we heard, here's one person that they said, "We need to get cars to stop when pedestrians are in the crosswalk. People cross to 10th Avenue to all the times of the day in traffic on 10th doesn't stop. Maybe install flashing pedestrian lights for when we have to cross." Another one is speeding is a concern. "I feel unsafe walking with my toddler and dog due to the narrow sidewalk and shoulder." Whenever we meet someone coming to the opposite direction on the sidewalk, one party has to move into someone's lawn or into the street if there isn't space available on the lawn side. I would love to see the sidewalk wire-in or park verge added in. The road doesn't seem busy enough to need four lanes for traffic, so maybe there is some space that can be reclaimed for pedestrians." Also, another one was roadway doesn't need four lanes. 10th Avenue being a four-lane road makes it feel like a highway for a driver, but it's a highway that's 30 miles per hour with pedestrians of all ages. It was stop signs that aren't very noticeable, and I feel like there isn't nearly enough traffic to justify being four lanes. And then the last one is need for safe pedestrian crossings. Would be great to install flashing pedestrian lights for when we have to cross along 10th. Hard to see people during sunrise or sunset due to being an east-west road.
Some potential solutions we found throughout collecting data and talking to the schools and the results we got from our surveys, based on the data that was collected and the feedback, like I said, public engagement, our team evaluated that the potential solutions to address safety and connectivity concerns are the following. The first solution we looked at were signing and striping improvements, including rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or otherwise known as RRFBs. These enhanced pedestrian signs have been statistically proven to increase motorists' yielding compliance rates to 98% and reduce pedestrian crashes by 98%. Other improvements could include installation of flashing stop signs or look in locations where stop sign compliance is low. Lastly, in-street pedestrian crossing signs and pedestrian refuge islands could be added to shorten the crossing distance and improve safety along the road.
The next solution that we thought of was a four-to-three lane conversion. So after looking at the volume trackers, our results showed that about around 3,000 people travel on the road daily. However, that volume does not justify four lanes of traffic, and especially not two lanes in each direction. Converting the roadway to instead one lane in each direction, including a continuous center turn lane, would provide many benefits. This lane geometry would impact driver speeds, and reducing this more than likely would reduce that 85th percentile and further reduce speeding. It also reduces the pedestrian crossing distance, making it safer and easier for them to cross and not feel that stress. There's also been a 47% reduction in all crash types, and this would also provide space for the addition of trails and sidewalks.
And currently, there are no pedestrian improvements along the north side of 10th Avenue between Harrison and Dakota. This makes it challenging, especially for younger students, to walk along 10th Avenue to get to the marked crossings at Adams, Spencer, and Dakota Street. It also causes pedestrians to cross the roadway in unmarked and unsafe locations to get to their destinations, such as the schools. The only option is to walk along the narrow shoulder or the front yards, which isn't practical in the winter with snow being on the ground. Adding a trail along the roadway will fill this gap and create a safe avenue for pedestrians to walk along the safe crossing locations. Increasing the existing sidewalk width and repairing damaged sidewalks will also help improve the pedestrian system, making the area more accessible to all ages.
Based on all of the information collected, feedback received from the public, and research done on possible solutions, we are recommending the following improvements to be implemented.
So first, taking a look at Harrison Street to Pierce Street, you see here that four-to-three lane conversion highlighted in purple. This would be done during the 2028 construction year. You also can see at the intersection at 10th and Adams, we would suggest implementing the LED stop signs or one of the other pedestrian intersection aids. You can also see that there is the addition of the pedestrian trail along the north side of 10th Avenue, and with this, we would be able to potentially remove the crosswalk circled in blue, as it would be much safer for the students and general public to be able to use that new sidewalk to walk down to the safer intersection at Adams.
Our next one is Pierce Street to Spencer Street. To the east, the next segment is shown from Pierce Street to Spencer Street. This area extends the four-to-three lane conversion along with constructing the trail along the north side of 10th Avenue. The two four-way stop intersections at Fuller Street and Spencer Street should be reviewed to include RRFBs, LED stop signs, and possibly in-street pedestrian signs. The three uncontrolled crosswalks at West Middle School should be removed to determine if enhanced crossings should be implemented or removed entirely. Lastly, extending sidewalks north along Holmes Avenue would fill the gap connecting existing walkways north of Shakopee Avenue.
The last segment to the east is between Spencer Street and Marshall Road. Again, the four-to-three lane conversion extends to this area, along with the trail along the north side, ending at Dakota Street. The intersection of Dakota and 10th Avenue should be reviewed to include LED stop signs to aid the compliance for stopping at the intersection near Pearson Elementary that has a lot of student crossing and a lot of, or no compliance to stop signs, so very low rate.
So looking at the next steps and recommendations, we recommend that the city continue to evaluate roadway conditions and potential solutions as they arise. Next would be to apply for grant funding, such as the Safe Routes to School or Active Transportation. If this funding is obtained and approved by council, you can include the recommended solutions in the 2028-2029 Road Rehabilitation Project.
Thanks to the city council for listening to us, prioritizing the safety for the students and pedestrians, and considering implementing the improvements, and we are now open to questions.
Questions from council. Mr. Whiting?
Talking about the Safe Roads to Schools Grant Program, did you get a little familiar with that? Did you look into that at all?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I did not get into specifics with the students on that program outside of just the grants, but I can answer questions.
I'm just wondering if, you know, some of these would fall under some of those guidelines for those grants, so I would assume so. And then, I guess my next question would be probably towards staff, and whether or not we could actually assess the correctional facility for sidewalk improvements in that area.
Our city's street assessment policy would allow us to assess for some of those new improvements. If that's a route we decide to take, we can certainly evaluate that with council on the merit for that. Outside of that, grant funds could help pay for those trail improvements as well, or we could look at other internal funding sources.
Thank you. Councilwoman Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Lilly, Nicole, and Isaac, great job. I always love seeing students to come and, you know, do this work. You make us think, you know? I'm not an engineer, but you make us, you know, look at these possibilities and what we could possibly do to, you know, make a difference. The 101 surveys you guys received back, awesome work. Sometimes we even have trouble when we send everything, we're like, wait, somebody answer? So great work, seriously, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lara?
Yep. Again, thank you, great job. You know, when I heard that the study was going on, I gave 10th Avenue a thought. You know, I've traveled to that road many of times, definitely between Marshall Road and Spencer, and I can tell you that stop sign, I've witnessed people run it, because whether out of just lack of awareness or disregard in general, but I think something definitely does need to be done in the name of safety, and I think you guys gave us a lot of good direction to possibly take that, so thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I was also going to echo the same thing I heard about Tim Street with the stop sign. It seems to be kind of a, not really stop, but more of a suggestion to stop there. But great analysis, and conclusion packaged all together, appreciate it. Your work is really, really solid.
Thank you.
My comments, there's areas on 10th Avenue that have a speed limit reduction to 20 during, when kids are present. Did you, did your analysis of the 85 percentile, did you see a lot of people that were going in that percentile, which was like 35 to almost 39, 40 miles an hour, in them areas when children were present?
Thank you, Mayor. The counts were collected during the school day, during the weekdays, so those statistics even include during that 20 mile an hour reduction, when you start to see those speed limits climb. So even during those times, they really play into how fast people are driving along the corridor. I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can certainly, we have that information that we can dive into and look at those hour-by-hour ranges and see the compliance for those school zones as well.
I would have to assume with that kind of a percentage, 85%, that yes, the answer is probably, yeah.
I would agree.
They're not slowing down, even for the kids, when the signs tell them to, so. Great job in your presentation. Give us your teachers' names, and we'll put in a good word for you. How did you find the experience working on this project with our staff?
The experience was super pleasant. Everyone is just super nice, especially in this building. We were here a lot of times in having meetings with Mr. Jordan, or just here as a class, and everyone was super respectful and didn't treat us like we were kids. Everyone treated us like we were adults and included us, and took it, like, any questions we had or concerns, I felt like I was listened to and that I was heard, and it was overall a really great experience, and I had a great time.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
I would agree with him, just, a lot of people put in a lot of effort to help us learn and get those hands-on experiences, especially Mr. Jordan. I mean, he gave us a lot of those experiences, like how we said, using volume and speed trackers, not just getting data or looking more research, but more hands-on skills. He also gave us a lot of creativity and leeway. He allowed us to make the presentations and make the surveys in different forms ourselves, and really gave us that hands-on experience, which will be really helpful when you get in the professional field, and I think that was really great, just allowing him to kind of give us the reins, while he also supervises and helps us out when we have questions. So it's really great, just, you know, we have more independence than having to guide ourselves, because in schools, you know, a lot of times you have a teacher guiding you step by step. This was more to work on our independence and confidence in the work field, and I think he did a really great job at that.
Appreciate your comments.
I mean, they kind of said it all, like, just working with everyone, everyone's so nice here, and I'm glad that we got this experience. I mean, it's a once-in-a-life, you know, experience, talking to city council, and yeah.
So what was the toughest part of the experience for you? And I'll just, since they said everything already, we'll let you answer that question. How's that sound?
Probably hammering the nails when we were putting the tubes up, because it was, I mean, it was like in October, so it was still kind of chilly, so I guess just, yeah.
Them tubes that the cars drive over?
Yeah, hammering the nails.
Pretty cool stuff. Well, we really appreciate you guys coming down and helping us out with this project and this research, so. And I'm sure it will be filed, and when we make the decision to do some more work, we're going to definitely dust it off and go back through it again and refresh ourselves and dive down deeper into what it takes to make the road safer, so. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Jordan? Sorry.
Nothing else to read, but thank you very much.
Okay, I was looking down, I apologize. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilwoman, Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Counselor Lara, seconded by Counselor Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consent business. Any changes to the consent?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Mr. Lara?
I'd like to pull 5D1.
Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt Consent Business as Modified.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any changes other than the one from Counselor Lara? Any questions on the motion? Will you read the consent, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 5A1 are the city council minutes. 5A2 is the 2024 City Council norms of behavior. 5A3 approves a temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Area Chamber and Visitors Bureau. 5A4 is the appointment of election judges. 5A5 is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Pathway to Policing Programs Grant Application. 5A6 is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Firearms Storage Program Grant Application. 5A7 authorizes a cable tech hire at Step 5. 5A8 approves a gambling premise permit for Shakopee Hockey. 5A9 approves an off-site gambling premise permit for Shakopee Trap Club. 5B1 awards the 2024 Ash Tree Removal Contract. 5B2 is the 2024 CIPP Project and approves plans and authorizes bidding. 5B3 is the Intergovernmental Agreement between the SMSC, the City of Shakopee, and Scott County for the CSAH 83 in Valley View Drive Traffic Signal. 5C1 is a surplus property disposal for a safe. 5C2 is a surplus property disposal for self-contained breathing apparatus. 5D2 requests for suspending park hours to allow overnight use of the log cabin. 5E1 is a Southwest Shakopee MUSA Comprehensive Plan Amendment. 5E2 is a text amendment to City Code Section 111.09, which is covering swimming pools. 5E3 is a resolution approving the CDAs' application for mediation funds for the central school site. 5E4 is a resolution declaring need for an EAW and approving contracts for an EAW for the Shakopee gravel pit. 5E5 is a preliminary and final plat of Canterbury Park 10th Edition. 5E6 is the Canterbury Boardwalk and Stables Planned Unit Development. 5F1 is surplus property. 5F2 accepts Captain Aris's resignation. 5F3 is a Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement modification. 5F4 is the Axon Mobile Camera Agreement. 5G1 is a Public Works employee hire for a fleet four-person position. And that would be it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We do have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion by anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. That'll take us to item number six. Recognition of Involved Citizens by the City Council on an Item That Is Not on Our Agenda. So if you're here to speak with us on an item not on our agenda, now would be that Welcome, thanks for stopping in. Pull that microphone up to yourself, and if you want to give us your name and address, that'd be great.
Thank you. My name is Eric Skoug. I'm Teamsters Local 320 President. My address is 409 Lakeview Avenue in Duluth, Minnesota. I represent your Public Works employees here in the City of Shakopee. For those of you on the council and maybe behind myself, as you all know, last, or excuse me, in November, the Teamsters had rejected an offer from the city, and we authorized a strike. Today, I presented you with some information. We have not had any conversations since November in our last two mediation sessions. I presented you guys today with a position where we feel that we can come to terms and get this agreement done before any form of dispute would take place. Shakopee's a great city. It for sure is a great city. What's interesting is the analysis that we provided you is the data that was given to us, not just taken out of the sky. It's based on contractual language from other cities, matching up like positions within your city that I represent. As you see, Shakopee is down on the wages. Out of the 11 comparable cities, the data will show that you are near the bottom of those wage studies. This is more than about wages as well. We have an opportunity to offer our members an opportunity to go into a Teamster Health Fund as well, that could save them money. So it's not all about negotiating money with you, it's about an opportunity to leave and potentially have these savings where these folks don't have to pay as much money out of pockets for premiums. Lastly, we've got a situation where we're asking for a simple time and a half after eight hours, outside of our working, our normal work schedules. I know that had been cited in mediation through the mediator, that this is not common, but it's very common, out of the comparable cities. In fact, all but one have this language in their contracts. So I'm just asking you today respectfully, before anything more takes place, I know we haven't had many conversations since mediation, but I'm asking you to take this into consideration, and that cooler heads prevail, and that we don't have a labor dispute here in your city. So I appreciate your time, and I look forward to seeing you in mediation soon. Thank you.
Questions? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda? Hello?
Can we get another chair? Can we pull up another chair for her, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Marina Aguirre Anthony, and this is my business partner, Stefania Barnes, and both of us are bilingual Realtors here locally in Shakopee. Today, we would like to introduce ourselves as the Twin Cities Chapters Board Members and part of the current Governmental Affairs Committee of NAREP Twin Cities. NAREP stands for National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals.
So we are a national trade organization based out of San Diego, made up for over 40,000 real estate practitioners in 100 chapters across the United States. We have our chapter here in the Twin Cities with a little bit over 200 members. And we, as NAREP Twin Cities, are the voice of the Hispanic real estate and proud champions of homeownership for the Hispanic community in and around the Twin Cities. With that said, I would like first to dispel a couple misconceptions that most folks have. In that one, you must speak Spanish, and secondly, you must be Latino or Hispanic to be a member or a leader of our chapter. Neither one of those is necessary. We look for members and partners who are interested in our mission, which is to advance sustainable Hispanic homeownership. A few data points that I'd like to share, a recent study from the Urban Institute in Washington, DC, which, they conduct an economic and social policy research, predicts that for the next 20 years, 70% of all new homeowners will be from the US Latino cohort. Seven out of every 10 purchases will be from the Latino community. And we do this as an economic force. The US Latino GDP has gone to $3.2 trillion in 2020, which will rank us the fifth-largest economy in the world. Every year nationally, we, NAREP, produce a report called the State of Hispanic Homeownership. There is where we track how we're performing as a cohort. And we discovered that Minnesota saw one of the fastest Hispanic homeownership growth rates in the region, up to 63% in 2010. In 2017, the Minnesota Hispanic homeownership rate went for 44.73%, and in 2021, it reached an all-time high of 57%. Finally, according to the census, the Latino community, the population here in Shakopee, has grown and is in the top 25 cities in Minnesota. In summary, our presence here today underscores the significant role that the Hispanic community plays in the fabric of the Twin Cities. that the Hispanic community plays in the fabric of the Twin Cities, particular here in Shakopee. As NAREP Twin Cities, we're not just here advocating for the Hispanic homeownership. We're fostering diverse and inclusive environment where all individuals, regardless of their heritage or language, can achieve the dream of homeownership. We appreciate the opportunity to share our insights with the council and look forward to collaborating with you for, for further enhancement in community and inclusivity in the homeownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? The, the question I have is how does somebody contact you folks? What would be the contact for a client?
Us personally?
Yeah, well, for your services that you provide.
We have a phone number, minus 612-817, or what do you mean, from our organization?
You have a website or something?
Yes, yes, we do. We have, NAREP Twin Cities has a website.
Is, is that N-A-R?
N-A-R, sorry. N-A-H-R-E-P.
H-R-E-P.
Yes.
Okay.
TwinCities.org.
Is .org, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Contreras?
Yeah, that was my, that was my comment, just to leave information where we can, if we know of, can give, pass your information along, yeah. So if, if you have a chance, maybe with Ms. Chelsea over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda? Welcome, thanks for coming. Have a seat and speak into the mic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Administration. My name is Josh Flom, 227 Eighth Avenue. This is my son, Aiden, he's a fifth grader at Saks. Speaking to you tonight as a concerned parent and resident of this city regarding our Parks and Rec Department and their choice to not provide services that are budgeted and provided by other municipalities. Tonight, Aiden asked if he could go to an ODR, which if you're not into that lingo, means outdoor rink. Just six or seven days ago, the city's Parks and Rec Department posted that they would not be flooding any rinks due to the weather. Looking at every other municipality that I could think of in the Twin Cities, they have all struggled with the warm temperatures, but they have found a way now in this last 10 days to flood their rinks, or at least some of their rinks, to provide services to the youth and to the residents of the community who pay their taxes. I'm not sure why the Parks and Rec Department chose a hard stance to not provide services that are budgeted, but I'm asking for the administration and the council to, to look at that choice and to reconsider, especially now that we have the weather to make ice outside. Aiden, do you have any comments?
No.
No? He's here to support.
Now, we've all received emails and I looked at the extended forecast myself. Monday it's going to be 39, Tuesday it's going to be 40. So yeah, we could have made some ice in five days. It's going to melt Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So Mother Nature is not cooperating very well.
The, the high temperatures obviously don't help make ice, but the low temperatures on each of those days would allow the ice to refreeze. And actually, the warmer temperatures during the day help condition the ice to make it a little bit more smooth. So I don't think it's not a possibility. Every other municipality, including if anyone does not live here from the administration, their municipalities are probably freezing some, if not all of their outdoor rinks. Shakopee is alone in this decision and unfortunately, I believe it's the wrong decision for our residents and our taxpayers.
Okay, any questions? Appreciate your comments, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else here that would like to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? Anybody else? Last call for anybody that would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none? We'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven is items removed from the consent agenda. We have one from Councilmember Lara. Mr. Lara?
Yep, this is just regarding the community center fees that we are amending. When we last, or met in the end of December approving the fee scheduled for 2024, we did not see, it was apparent that there was a change with the lookout. Basically, I'm just going to keep this short. It sounds like we, we heard and we listened, we made changes. And in terms of the people that reached out to myself, and I don't know if anyone else was reached out to about it, but I did do some further research and so we, when we decided to do a resident, non-resident fee now for this, since that has never been done since, what, 2016? Is that right, is what I'm reading? That I do agree that that would be appropriate now to have that separate fee. And I did do research in terms of comparables of other community centers and even there's community centers out there that don't have a split fee. This, how we have it set up is still lower than theirs anyways, so. I did also have a comment that someone had mentioned about a separate city, that their tot time was lower than ours, but, and then in that instance, we were not comparing apples to apples, it was more apples to oranges, so.
Tot time.
Tot time.
Explain that.
One of the cities, they allow at their, their sports dome that you can, it's like $3 and you can, they just set out a bunch of recess equipment and you can take your kids under, assuming under school age to go play and run around. But that instance, we're not comparing apples to oranges. We're talking about indoor playground versus a dome field, so. Just with that said, then I just want to adopt ordinance 02024-0003, amending the City of Shakopee fee schedule for the community center fees.
Second, and thank you for your comments.
Second by Mr. Whiting. Motion by Mr. Lara, any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Brings us to item number eight, public hearings. First, public hearing, 8A is a public hearing for proposed vacation about Somerville Street right-of-way. You open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, we have that. Very good, any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is passes, we are, public hearing is open. Go ahead, Mr. Kerski.
Mayor and Council, so this is again, the public hearing for vacation of portion of the Somerville Street public right-of-way. So the City of Shakopee is requesting this vacation. It's adjacent to River City Center. The property in question is located north of First Avenue. The EDA is the owner of land around the buildings. Would like to clean up some of the outstanding title issues. And once completed, you'll, here later tonight, we're going to be replating the property into a single legal parcel. The EDA and the CDA will then create two condominium, condominium units and the land parcel is common area. So this is the area in question in red over here. So we'll also be coming back to, this parcel over here is actually deeded to the city, so we'll be coming back to the city council to ask that to be deeded over to the EDA. And once that's done, we have a contract with SCH to complete a new plat. So the area that we're talking about tonight is the area outlined in red.
Questions of staff? Mr. Kerski, I have a couple, if you can put that back up.
Yes, sir.
There's two blue areas on the west. You pointed out one is going to get deeded back. How about the other blue area where the driveway is?
Mayor and Council, so this is currently, this is one parcel and this piece is connected to that one parcel.
And it's the middle one that's going to have to get deeded to the EDA?
This little tiny sliver right here is actually owned by the city for some reason and will have to get deeded over to the EDA.
Okay, and the red area is currently owned by the city?
It, Mayor and Council, this is owned by the city. When we do the plat, it basically will follow the roadway line and this still will remain city property. This is the city sign over here in the corner.
And why, why was this a right-of-way to begin with?
I believe this used to go through to the original First Avenue. And then when County 101 was reconfigured, you can see there are parcels over to the right and elsewhere that are still separate parcels, even though they're now either right-of-way or owned by MINDAT. So it's kind of, the, the state and the county, when they do these, don't often clean up the title work. So that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of staff?
No.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, now would be that time. Anybody who want to speak in a public hearing? Seeing none, wishes of council. Mr. Whiting?
We're not going to need Somerville Street back, right?
No, sir.
All right, with, with that, I make a motion to adopt resolution. Are we still in the public hearing? Let's just make a motion to close the public hearing first.
Second by Counselor Contreras, discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed.
I got that one, someone else can take the next.
Wishes of council, Ms. Contreras?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R2024-005, a resolution approving the vacation of a certain segment of Somerville Street public right-of-way.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
This is second here, here. Mr. Lara?
Sure.
On the motion? Discussion on the motion?
Oh, sir.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, item 8B. Also a public hearing for a proposed vacation of a public sanitary sewer easement at 550 Valley Park Drive. Motion to open a public hearing would be in order?
I'll make the motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delaney? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open.
Mayor and Council, again, this is the public hearing for the vacation of public sanitary sewer easement at 550 Valley Park Drive. The site is approximately 10.13 acres. The property owner is the Brambilla Family Limited Liability Limited Partnership Number One. The applicant is actually the attorney who's trying to clear up the title. It's owned heavy industrial and it's guided from mixed-use employment. The request to vacate the sanitary sewer easement is to finalize a pending property sale. The easement was established in 1973 and then transferred to the Met Council, to the city in 2007. The Met Council Engineering and Shakopee Public Utilities reviewed the request and have no objections since the easement is no longer needed. The existing stormwater drainage and ponding easement will remain and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. And this is the Brambilla property. And that easement is located in the yellow area right in the front here. It's an old Met Council sewer line easement and they've actually built another one out here and this is no longer needed. So the staff recommends adoption, approving the vacation of the easement.
Questions of staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Just a quick clarification. On the back of our, our memo, it said that the applicant had provided a title search dated December 27, 24. It's 23.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerski, the, I guess I'm not, well, with my wonderful eyes, you know, I'm looking at this storm drainage and utility easement that I guess I didn't miss, but I'm picking it up on your map here with the red arrow. Where it overlaps the sewer easement, will the storm drainage and ponding easement continue through that yellowed out?
Mayor and Council, that will remain. That's a separate recorded easement, I think. It overlaps the sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer easement is on top of that.
But that, that portion of the sanitary?
Will remain.
Okay. And the other question that I had written down here was, do we have any Met Council comments since it was originally their easement, to my understanding?
Mayor and Council, the Met Council communicated back to the staff that they're fine with this.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff? All right, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to address us on this matter, now would be that time. Hello and welcome.
Afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers Anton Chescus. I'm one of Bryce Hume Miller's partners at Hume, Morgan, Tarek, and Chescus.
Microphone, please. Pull that microphone up and do that one more time for us.
Sure.
You can slide that on the table, too. There you go.
Thank you. Anton Chescus from Hume, Morgan, Tarek, and Chescus, one of the applicant's law partners. He couldn't be here today. Our only comments were that the original recommendation was for the approval with conditions of the, the title search that Mr. Mayor you mentioned. But I believe that the packet that I reviewed still contained that condition in the proposed resolution. So my request would be that, that condition be removed and that just the vacation be approved without any further conditions.
Well, wouldn't we want to make sure there's no other discrepancies in the title search? Otherwise, otherwise we'll be coming back and doing this again.
So we did provide a certificate of title on December 27th to city staff that shows no other additional title issues. We'd be happy to provide an updated one as of today, if council would prefer.
Okay. Any questions of applicant?
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, what condition is it that you are requesting to be removed in a resolution?
Title search.
It, it should really be the only one that was on the proposed resolution. There was a memo from city staff early on in December asking for the title search and then in response, we provided a clean certificate of title on December 27th to city staff. But I don't believe the proposed resolution was ever updated to reflect.
Mr. Thompson, under the, 02, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 and 8, seventh, whereas, it says an updated title search filed by the applicant in this proceeding confirms no other interest from utility providers in the above sanitary sewer easement. So that's talking specifically about that easement, not all the way around the property. So I don't know. Where would we go from here?
This is, it confirms no other interests.
I, I see that whereas, but the resolution has, states the vacation of the certain public sanitary sewer easement as identified above, provided the following two conditions are met. Are you saying that one or both of those conditions should be removed from the resolution?
I'm, I'm correct. I'm saying they should not be conditioned because we've provided a title search through a certificate of title. This is Torrance property, so it, there are no other utility holders in any existing underlying easements on the property other than what will remain. And two is not really a condition, it's just a statement of the legal realities, which is just that this applies exclusively to the specific easement and doesn't impact any other easements. That's not a condition.
Mr. Kerski, I'd have to defer a little bit to you on this as to whether or not what they provided has been, is, is?
They, they provide, Mayor and Council, they did provide the title report December 27th. This resolution was reviewed by their council prior to going on, but it, as long as the city attorney doesn't have any objections, we don't have any objections.
No, as, as long as that whereas has been satisfied, I don't have any problems with just an unconditional resolution that, that reads, stops with the word, is in the public interest, period, and then deletes everything after, provided the following conditions are met.
Maybe I can ask, Mr. Thompson, let me ask you a question. If we adopt this as-is, couldn't the applicant just refer to staff and say, I, I gave you that, so that condition is met and it's kind of a moot point?
That's what I was thinking.
It's a possibility, Mr. Mayor, but on the other hand, this gets recorded and if that condition is in it, and it, it.
But they met that condition if they already gave it to the staff.
That's correct.
Why does, why is it really an issue if you've already gave it to them?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the reason we're doing this is to clear up title for a sale. So what, what I would like to avoid is the title company to review this and say, bring me something else that shows you've met the condition and then I got to come back here and get another resolution.
Got it.
And I, again, if, if we need a new title search in the last, you know, two weeks gap here, I'd be happy to provide that as well, but that, that's the, that's the only quibble I have with this.
Nothing better than getting rid of some bureaucracy, Mr. Whiting.
Let me just clarify, you're just looking for that one whereas to be pulled, number seven whereas, I'm going to call it.
No, so the, the way that your resolution reads is in the now therefore paragraph.
Now therefore.
Yep. There's a, there's a determination here that this is in the public interest. I, I would like removed, provided that the following conditions are met. I would like that sentence removed. And on the first paragraph after that, I would like the sentence, sentence removed, which says a title search shall be conducted to confirm other interests. I would like that sentence also removed since I believe that has been completed.
This part right here.
No problems with those conditions.
Just, just so I'm, that makes sense. I, let's, let's go through that one more time so we're all on the same pad, page. We're looking at the first page, page of the resolution, we're, we're at number one.
After now therefore, be it resolved. After now therefore, be it resolved.
Well, but there's still conditions that have to be met. Item number one would still have to be met, right?
So the first sentence of item number one is not a condition. And that's, it's a statement. And that's why, I think that's the finding, Mr. Mayor. And that's why I'm asking that the last, one, two, three, four, five, six words of the now therefore paragraph be removed, that when it says provided the following conditions are met, I would like that removed.
The title search.
And then, in the first finding, I would like the sentence, sentence removed, which starts with the title search shall be conducted. F2 is also a finding, so that can be left alone.
Okay. All right.
I have no problem with that.
Questions of council? Mr. Reynolds, your comment was, you're good with that?
No problem with that, Mr. Mayor.
You're good with that? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing matter for a vacation of a public sanitary sewer easement at 550 Valley Park Drive? Now would be the time to step forward. Anybody? Last call? Seeing none? Motion to close a public hearing would be in order?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second? Seconded by Mr. Lara? Did you second it, Mr. Lara?
Yes.
There you go. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed. Wishes of the council?
Now, do we have to read all the...
We're going to notate changes to the resolution and the resolution number if you want to make that motion, Councilor Contreras?
I can totally try. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R. 2024-003, approving a vacation of public sanitary sewer easement on PID 270550051, with the notations that we're changing on the ninth paragraph. We will be removing provided the following conditions are met. And then, on the number one condition, we're going to remove the second sentence that says a title search shall be conducted to confirm other interests from the utility holders in any existing slash underlying easements on the property, which that has already been satisfied.
Okay, sir.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Whiting. Discussion on the motion? So just so we're absolutely clear here, under the now therefore, we are removing provided the following conditions are met, so we'll cross that part out. Item number one will remain, but the second... Public interest is hereby, after the word "approved," period, a title search shall be conducted to confirm other interests from utility holders in any existing underlying easements on the property. That portion is removed, correct? And legal council, go to that?
Correct.
Okay. Any motion and second, is there any questions from council? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. There you go.
Make a motion to recess to our Economic Development Authority meeting.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Delaney? Any discussion on the motion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we are in recess. Madam President?
Thank you. I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for January 16, 2024. First on our agenda is the roll call. If staff would please make note of the roll for tonight. Second, we have the approval of our agenda. Commissioners? Commissioner...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have one by Commissioner Lara. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on number three, we have our consent business on there, we have our EDA minutes. Any questions, discussions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business agenda.
So we have a motion and Commissioner Delaney, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number four, general business, we have a presentation tonight, Mr. Kurski, process of conversion of the RCC into two condominium units. Take it away, sir.
Good evening, Madam President, board members. So six or seven months ago, council approved a contract with Helmut and Johnson, the cost of which is being shared by the CDA to basically collapse the current agreements that we have in River City Center. If you remember, there's a long-term lease and then there's on top of that a commercial lease and that really to divide up the interest in the property into two condominium units and then the common area, which would be the land underneath the buildings. So before we inundate you over the next few months with lots of documents, I thought it would be helpful to have Attorney Michael Clem, who's been working on this for the past six or seven months, to come forward and walk you through kind of the general outline of what you're going to see over the next few months. He did this with the CDA board last week and I thought it would be good to bring it forward to you.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Madam Commissioner.
Madam President, I have a question on the first page of the Helmut and Johnson memorandum. Under item number two, it says ownership of the residential portion of the building will automatically transfer to the EDA upon expiration of the ground lease in '37. And item one transfers to the EDA the retail portion in 2035. So I guess, since the county and the HRA had the residential from the beginning, I guess I'm not understanding that portion as being current.
We have our...
Madam Chair and board members, I think I'll let Attorney Clem walk through and then he'll be happy to answer questions.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, glad to speak with you tonight and answer questions you have about the current structure and also the process to convert to condominium, you know, should you choose to proceed with that, which we're anticipating. So first, for purposes, or for the benefit of the audience also, the purpose of this presentation is basically to provide a high-level summary of the process to convert the River City Center to the condominium form of ownership and also to establish the Shakopee Economic Development Authority as the owner of condominium unit one, which would be the first level of both buildings where the retail operation is located. And then to establish the Scott County Community Development Agency, or the CDA, as the owner of condominium unit two, which would include the residential apartments on both the second and third levels of the buildings and the parking garage, which serves those units. So first, we'll discuss the current ownership and leasing structure. And to Mr. Lehman's point, the EDA currently owns the land, the dirt literally, and the CDA is leasing the land from the EDA. The CDA many years ago constructed the buildings and today the CDA owns the buildings and the EDA owns the land. The ownership of the buildings is subject to the terms of the retail ground lease and the residential ground lease. In a ground lease, the tenant leases the ground and then generally pays the cost to construct the building and owns the building. And then, when the ground lease expires or is terminated, the ownership of the building goes to the landlord without any compensation for that. So under the current structure, the EDA owns the land, the CDA owns the building. With respect to the retail portion of the building, when the ground lease expires, the retail portion of the building would automatically be transferred to the EDA in 2035. And then, ownership of the residential portion of the building will automatically transfer to the EDA when the residential ground lease expires in 2037. So that is the current structure. The proposal is to accelerate that process in part by terminating, voluntarily terminating, both of those ground leases simultaneously with creation of the condominium and transfer of unit two of the condominium to the CDA.
Okay. Go ahead.
So in regard to the current structure, the EDA currently is the master tenant under that master retail lease and the EDA is leasing space on the first floor of the building to various businesses for commercial use. Currently, the CDA is leasing apartments on the second and third floors of the buildings to residential tenants. And the plan is to leave all of those leases in place through this process so that the actual occupants of the building would not be affected by this process. Are there questions about the current structure?
Commissioner...
So if the ground lease is going to be terminated early, who will own the dirt?
So at the moment, the ground leases are terminated and this would happen at a closing simultaneously with the other steps we'll talk about. But throughout the entire process, the EDA, the Shakopee Economic Development Authority, owns the dirt. When the ground leases are terminated, the EDA will also become the owner of the buildings. And the tenants will retain their interests under the leases through this process.
Okay, but the building includes the residential portion.
Right, so...
Which is going to the CDA.
Yeah, that's...
Yes, and we'll get to that, transfer back as we go through this.
Okay. Go ahead.
So to prepare for the conversion to a condominium, various steps are needed before we get to the closing. First of all, as was discussed earlier tonight, curing some title defects to establish marketable title to the entire property. Also, all of the property must be converted to the Torrance form of ownership. Currently, it's a mix of abstract and Torrance. And in order to create a condominium, all of the property must be either abstract or Torrance. So since some is Torrance now, the typical process is to convert the rest to the Torrance form of ownership. And then we will also need to draft and approve an agreement between the EDA and the CDA, which will address the various things involved in the process, the termination of the ground leases, the condominium conversion, and the terms of sale of unit two from the EDA to the CDA. Some of the important points related to that part of the transaction, there's been discussion among staff about a proposed purchase price of just a dollar, basically nominal consideration, to be paid by the CDA to the EDA for ownership of unit two. So obviously not a typical arms-length transaction, but given the history of this property and how it was developed cooperatively between the EDA and the CDA, with the CDA funding the construction of the buildings and also the plan for long-term cooperation in ownership and management of the property, that is what's being contemplated at this point. But ultimately, that's, you know, a key term that will be part of what the EDA would be deciding.
Go ahead.
Madam President, I guess my question would be, who is paying for the attorney fees to title work and all these other expenses? And should them costs be shared between the EDA and CDA?
Madam President and Mayor, that's the way the current agreement is, we're sharing 50/50 in the court.
Okay.
Thank you.
The sale of a condominium unit typically involves extensive disclosures, but those can be waived in a commercial transaction. And given the level of involvement that the CDA has in this process, it's my anticipation that to minimize legal fees, we'll probably ask them to waive some of those disclosures, just to streamline things. Some of the other steps that are required, a surveyor must prepare not only the plat that was described earlier tonight to replat, a two-dimensional plat of the entire property, but also a common interest community plat is required, also known as a CIC plat or a condominium plat. And that will depict the boundaries of the condominium units, things like common elements and limited common elements. So it's part of, it's actually considered part of the declaration for a condominium, is a CIC plat showing where everything is. Also, we will be drafting condominium governing documents, including a set of articles of incorporation, which are a very basic document to create the nonprofit corporation that governs the condominium, as well as the declaration and bylaws. The declaration, I think of typically as similar to a constitution. It's basically the top-level governing document for the condominium. And then the bylaws are more governing the day-to-day operations. We have worked extensively to draft the declaration and bylaws and to this point, I believe we're very close to final form on those, which we believe protect the interests and establish a good framework, both for the EDA and the CDA. And those will be coming to you for review, you know, as we go through the process. As the next step, being that it will be Torrance property, the Scott County Examiner of Titles must review and approve the declaration as well as the CIC plat. That serves, you know, one benefit, is it's a safeguard for the parties involved, getting that stamp of approval. And then also because it's Torrance property, that's confirming that these things are in excellent shape before we proceed with it. Other steps will include preparing a preliminary annual budget to show what costs will be related to this condominium operationally and also coordinating property and liability insurance so that those will be in place at the time of closing.
Madam President, is that for both, when you talk about the condominiums, is that the lower level?
So when I speak of the condominium, I am speaking of the entire project, the buildings and the land.
Okay.
And further on, we'll discuss the allocation of costs there.
Okay, and then the annual budget, is that both the EDA's portion of it and the CDA's portion of it?
Correct, the annual budget will cover all of the costs that are condominium association expenses. And the declaration then talks about how those costs are allocated and they'll actually be allocated by annual assessments, similar to the situation in typical condominiums, say with families who own them, they receive assessments and they pay monthly assessments to the association. It'll be a similar structure here.
Okay.
Are there any other questions about the preparation for that process? Moving on then to the steps that happen simultaneously at closing. For the agreements, we will terminate the retail ground lease and the master retail lease. At that point, ownership of the retail part of the building will transfer to the EDA. And the retail leases between the EDA and the existing commercial tenants will remain in place and that's confirmed by section 27.02 of all of the retail leases. We also will terminate the residential ground lease. At that point, ownership of the residential portion of the building will transfer to the EDA, but that will be transferred back to the CDA by deed that will be recorded immediately after the declaration is recorded. So the process will include recording the declaration and recording the CIC plat of River City Center condominium and then immediately recording a deed from the EDA to the CDA for unit two, which includes the residential apartments on the second and third floors of the building and also will include the parking garage. At that point, the EDA will retain ownership of unit one, including the commercial space on the first floor of the building, or both buildings. So to summarize, the EDA will own unit one and the CDA will own unit two. Each of those unit owners will also own a 50% undivided interest in the common elements, which includes the land and essentially the shell of the building. And each unit owner will generally be responsible for 50% of the common expenses of the condominium association, things like maintenance and insurance, except as otherwise provided in the declaration. And the declaration does address specific costs that in fairness should be allocated, say entirely, to one unit owner or the other. For example, the cost of maintaining elevators and the stairwells, since the first-floor occupants don't need to use those, those would be entirely on the CDA. Are there any questions about the process or the purpose behind it?
Some questions, thoughts?
Madam Chair, the rear parking lot that faces 101, the ground floor businesses have access from the back and from the First Avenue side, but I think I'm understanding that the parking lot will be the CDA's?
It's my understanding the parking lot will not be included in the condominium. It will be a separate city parking lot.
Like a public city lot.
That's correct.
All right.
For public use, right.
Public, okay. More?
Don't?
So, Madam President and board members, so the... So, so Madam President and Board members, so the idea here is, the way that we're working on the documents is the city will be responsible for maintenance of the exterior of the first floor of the building, so all the storefronts, much like we are today. The CDA will be responsible for maintenance of everything above the first floor to the roof. We share in common the roof because all of the commercial equipment for all the tenants downstairs sits on that roof. And when there's a leak, it leaks all the way down into the first floor, so that is a piece that we will share commonly from an ownership standpoint. The CDA will maintain on the first floor, the elevator and the corridor and their common room will be part of their condominium unit. So they'll have floors 2, 3, the parking garage, and a little tiny piece of the first floor of one of the buildings. The biggest changes right now under the current master lease, we have if a tenant on the second floor has an overflow tub or whatever and it goes into the first floor, we are responsible for the repairs, they don't have any liability. The condominium documents will put that liability back onto that condo owner.
Good idea.
The, the other thing that we've built into it is it's a, two votes for each unit, and then it goes to mediation if there's some issue. But if either party sells, so if the CDA were to sell its unit or the EDA sells its unit, whoever remains gets the third vote. So the new owner would only have one vote, because there was some concern over what if we didn't like whoever one other sold the other unit to, that the CDA and the EDA have kind of a community interest versus a real estate interest. And so there was agreement in all the parties that that extra vote would transfer to the remaining party.
Got it. I have, um, two hands go up here.
Just a quick question, you said the, the parking garage remains with the CDA?
That's correct.
Thank you, and then question...
Yeah, just the, with the picture, because the, it says new parcel, it's just, that's just the parcel, it has nothing to do, um, I mean, obviously, the parking lot's staying separate, correct?
Yeah.
So, Madam President and Board members, so there will be a new CIC plat that basically will be the building and surrounding common properties, and then there'll be a separate piece of that plat that will remain as the city parking lot, that'll be owned by the EDA.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, I, I, my just thought is that we're not, um, the city's not like in the housing business, so giving it to the CDA and letting them do their job on what they're best at is a good idea, and then us, um, you know, doing the commercial part, that that's our, that's what we're good at, so my, my, my little thought.
Madam President and Board members, I mean, the other thing is right now, under the commercial lease, we're supposed to be paying $180,000 a year in rent, which we're not paying, in support of the fact that this is moving forward, the CDA is not holding us liable for that rent.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this was just for feedback and questions? Any more?
I just have one more question, Madam President. Is there any outstanding questions that Mr. Clem has?
I don't believe so at this time. It's been a good, very good experience working with city staff, as well as with the CDA, you know, to work through the various steps, so...
Pretty complicated process.
It is. It's challenging, it's very unusual to have equal control in a condominium. Generally, we try to avoid that, but being that it's cooperating government entities, we're more comfortable with that. Also with having the backstop of arbitration, if there's some hot time is, you know, gridlock. Also coming up with the provisions to protect both of the government entities, should the other one want to sell, with both the right of first refusal, and also if the proposed sale is to a non-government entity or person that cannot proceed without the remaining government entity's approval. And that approval then can be conditioned on changing the documents to give that government entity control of the project effectively.
All right, thank you. Um, you did say at the beginning that you had already presented this to the CDA, correct?
Correct, we met with them about similar information.
Were they...
They were very favorable.
Okay, perfect, that's, that's good to hear. All right, well, thank you so much, and we'll continue to see you bringing us more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clem.
All righties, moving on.
Thanks, Michael.
We, number five, we have no reports tonight, so we are now on number six. Commissionsers?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 6 at 7:00 PM.
Um, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a, a motion by Ms., Mr. Delaney and a second by Commissioner Lada. So, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Madam President, we'll reconvene in the Shakopee City Council meeting after the EDA. That brings us to Item 11A1, Discussion on Cultural Corridor and Schroeder House. Ms. Kurski.
Mayor and Council, um, we did include in your packet the entire 117-page in-color report, so it'll be easier for you all to see it, yes? And again, this is still a work in progress. You saw on the schedule, there's still feedback coming, but one of the things I will say is the consultant who's been working on this for a couple of years did mention this, they've been under a pretty tight timeline, because if you remember, we have federal funding, $750,000 that needs to start expenditure this year, so we've been pushing them so that we can get this out to bid. But this is the first time in their history of a firm that they've actually had so many parties working cooperatively together, and there really haven't been any major disagreements. So this is the design development, the second draft. I think the key interpretive message that came, and actually Leonard Wabashaw from the Shakopee Minotaur Can Sue came up with this very early on, is that the river represents many people and many paths, but it's only one river. So, um, out of this process came kind of these themes, that the river made this place, that it's a, started out as a Dakota place, there's been many paths, there's resources from the river, and restoring and renewing the river. So these were the design inspiration that the consultant and the group came together with. So reoccurring design elements you'll see are the flowing shape of the river, Minnesota River Rock, and then plants, birds, insects, and animals that are located along the river, and then the repeating shape of trusses from the Home Street Bridge, and the bricks at the Shakopee Brickyard. So this will be kind of a forms and materials that they've worked on, so a, we all agreed early on and with some early input from Public Works and Perks, that we didn't want anything that could be easily damaged, so while this looks like wood, it's going to be reinforced cast and stained concrete. And then with exterior grade graphic panels on it, you can see it'll have a substantial footing underneath it. And then these are, um, another type, this is a powder-coated aluminum frame that would have a picture screened onto it, that when you look, you actually could see what the view is, what it looked like historically. And then these, you will see in a little bit more detail in a second, but these are various pieces along the trails, to give you some idea of, you know, we understand this area of floods in certain portions, but they're also areas we can't necessarily dig, so we'll be using hilical piers, for instance, in Memorial Park. And then one of the, uh, early on things is they wanted people that would have some kind of inability to read all of these, to be able to at least feel things, so this is an idea of doing a couple cast bronze reliefs along the trail that show, for instance, the river and the original layout of the city. This one actually is in particular for the, um, where the Schroeder House is, where the Schroeder Brickyard was. It's an interpretive piece that people can kind of feel the history of where the kilns used to be and where the quarry was for the clay. And again, here's a larger graphic panel, and again, this is all concrete with a exterior panel on it, and you can see this is in an area proposed where there probably is some, um, potential archaeological resources, so these, this is installed with hilical piers. This is a larger piece, it would actually be down near the Schroeder House. It's anodized aluminum with concrete, and there was a lot of discussion on the canoe, but this is a replica, a small piece that you actually can't sit in, that just shows that it was originally used for traveling up and down the river, and there would be a panel up here that would describe that, and these are actually, you can see through them. So this would be kind of looking down at where the marina is, basically. And then typical panels, so you can see there's a variety of colors, history, so Hard Day's Work talks about, um, the Brickyard, some of the animals that are in the area, and there's also a map that will guide people along the trail. So again, here's the sample of what an augmented reality glass panel would look like, so you can actually look through. Here's, um, plants and animal signs. To the credit of the group, they've done a lot of research on animals that are there today or there historically, so this is a panel with an otter, beaver, and a muskrat. And these are etiquette markers, so anywhere where there's archaeological resources, these would be installed, that basically say, please respect the sacred mounds in this area. Some of the mounds you can see today, but there are a lot underground that you can't see because there's been changes to the earth. And here's a good example of that wayside sign, so this really talks about the history of the Brickyard. It's a pretty big panel, it's 42 inches by 24 inches. And there's been a lot of work on, um, these diagrams have been made, a lot of historic research, so working with the DNR, their current exhibit will be removed and be replaced by some of these signs. And again, this is where that tactile map would be for the Brickyard. So this is kind of where the exhibit locations are. It starts at the Home Street Bridge and works its way, all the way down to the landing. So there's a mixture here of etiquette markets, augmented reality panels, some sculptures, some wayside signs, plant and animal signs, and then interpretive nodes where there would be multiple exhibits. So here's an example of one, um, that kind of shows a little bit of history, there's a lot of the history in the community that people really don't know about, so, um, this particular individual in the middle here was a slave that escaped and actually started a business here, so really talking about some of the long history of the riverbed and some of the entrepreneurism that occurred there. And then there'll be these areas called zonemaking, where you can actually see different interpretive nodes. So the Schroeder House has a pretty big node because it's kind of a main point, so here you would have an orientation sign, that tactile map we talked about, that Wild Rice sculpture that had the canoe on it, and then there would be a, where the lime kill is, a wayside sign talking about how the Brickyard was there, the augmented reality sign, they actually would show the Brickyard as you look through it, and another one that would show the drying sheds, that actually the foundations still exist in the parcel that the city owns. And then along wayside, um, again, talking about the history of the different Dakota people that have lived along here and their dependence on the river for their livelihood, and then changing as the city was built out, from Shakopee to Shakopee, and talking about that history of the different people that were involved in creation of the city. And then throughout the area, there'll be plant and animal signs, um, both historic and what's there today, so this goes back to the bison herd that the Shakopee Minotaur Can Sue had just brought back, but there were a lot of bison, particularly in this area, because of access to water. And there were elk back in the day to give people a little bit better idea of how fertile this area was. And then plant and animal signs, so, um, there's red-tailed hawks, bald eagles in this area, and it talks about how oak trees were a dominant feature in this, the entire city of Shakopee, and then over time, um, they were cut down. And then talking about transportation, this is a, they're still working on some of these pictures, but this is a typical picture of the riverboat, talks about the history of that the river was really the road for Shakopee, for both people and for goods that came in and out of the city. Oops, and I think that's it. Happy to answer questions.
Questions of staff? Mr. Delaney, we'll go right down the line.
Just a quick question, as far as the signage, what kind of lifespan do those signs have as far as weather and...
For the signs? I think the, the signage itself, we heard today, probably 10 to 20 years, the other pieces are much longer because they're concrete. I think one of the things we heard early on from Public Works and, there were some other ideas they tossed out, I think the city administrator and I heard them and went, yeah, we're not maintaining that, and it's got to be something that's super durable and can't be tipped over and, and damaged. And the benefit of those panels, typically they're porcelain, um, so even if they get graffiti on it, it'll wash off, it's hard to damage it. Yeah, this firm has done, I want to probably say 20 to 30 similar projects to this.
Mr. Whitey?
Well, thank you. Looking at the, this is a lot of work. The 106 Group does some amazing work in this field, in this, putting together the signs, as you may remember, I was part of that project with the Heritage Society that did a few signs down at Memorial Park, and that's a lot of work, that's an incredible amount of work. So having the concepts put together and everything, that's, uh, that's great. Now, I do have some comments that you said are work in progress. I happen to have some riverboat pictures, uh, negatives, actually, I own the negatives.
That would help, because...
So those would be really good for those, you know, looking at the river point of view, uh, because there was excursions to Shakopee and, and they're a great shot, so maybe we could work with that, on some of that. And also, I didn't see anything on the homes foundation.
Yep, so, um, Mayor and Council, where that foundation is, they haven't covered all the signs as part of this, but there will be one there that talks about homes, and, um, there's a big debate amongst the group about, was it his house, was that the trading post, was it his second house, you know, who lived there? But I think over the next few months, we'll get that ironed out.
Yeah, he had a few, I think it was second, my thoughts, but who knows? But, uh, it had a little, uh, had the, uh, water in the basement, actually had a, a spring right there, so...
And spring's still running?
Yeah, the spring works, yeah, that's the only plumbing in the house that works. There's no house.
Major credit to the Hochekarete staff, so they've spent a huge amount of time researching, you know, animals and history and spelling, because they, they want to make sure this is right. I think one of the benefits, you know, this, the DNR said this trail is used somewhat in the summer for bike riding and walking, this will really probably animate the trail more. School groups are going to take tours of this because there is a map, and they'll be able to learn more about the history. But it will, right now, the Memorial Park is a, actually a major tourist destination because of the mounds, and this gives a huge addition to that experience for people coming to visit that area.
Ms. Contreras?
Just a quick comment, um, I myself, I mean, I've lived here, what, 24 years now? And I've had the opportunities to go out there on the tours we've done with the city and, and go see the, you know, the cultural corridor. How many people live here currently, you know, who don't even know that area exists? So, I don't know, partnering up with the schools, and like you, you mentioned, field trips, they're always looking for places to take the kids that's inexpensive, you know...
Free.
Free, free. So this would get, you know, be a great experience for our kids and get them to get, you know, how much more do you want than having the actual place? We're always like, you know, sitting in the room, um, just looking at things that happened, history, and you're like, well, no, actually, that's here in Shakopee, let's go out there and see it, let's go see what's, and experience the places. So, I don't know, I think this is pretty cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Lara?
My comment's not very, uh, productive, but I just thought, riverboat, we need to find a riverboat and plant it out there.
Maybe do some gambling on it?
Hey, hey, what happens on the boat? I don't know, but I think, riverboat. No, I, when I saw those, because we know that this goes underwater every, pretty much every year, and I'm, so I'm looking at, like, with the stone and all that, I'm assuming these can take, you know, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to get washed away, they're going to be firmly planted, we're not going to find marker number seven down by number 12.
So Mayor and Council, as part of this long, several-year discussion, that's been a key point of ours, and so their goal is to locate most, if not all of them, out of the 100-year floodplain.
Okay. Mike?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, my couple of questions. First of all, it's not, it's not free, it's $800,000 of tax dollars. Second question is, you mentioned that there's, this company has done signs like this in other locations. Do you have locations of like signs that we could visit on our free time?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'll find out which ones have been done around here. They're a national company, in fact, the designer that worked on this, who, who's been here, um, is out of California, but the 106 Group has offices, I think, in five or six states, so I'll find out, um...
Yeah, if we can get both kinds, not necessarily like the framing stuff, but you got the AR signs and then you got the regular ones. Um... On, what'd you call it? It was porcelain or something?
Yep, the, so those, we have plenty of in the Twin Cities. The augmented reality have been used mostly at National Park Service sites like in Washington and Virginia. But we'll find you some examples of what we can in the Twin Cities area.
And then I've got some broader questions along with kind of Councilor Lara's lines of the flooding issue. Um, some of these are pretty close to the ground and they will go underwater. So I'm, if I'm hearing right, you're telling me that they can handle being underwater?
Mayor and council, correct. That's why we chose concrete.
Okay. And then the other thought that I had was if, if you were, and I was looking at the broader designs in the, in the three pages memo that you gave us, actually it was like a hundred and some, right? Um, if you look at the Schro- Schro- Schroeder House, they show a fence on the backside by the trail. And I'm starting to question whether that's a good idea, not necessarily a fence being a bad idea, but one that you can't see through. And I was thinking if you were sitting in that backyard and wanted to look over at the side of the old brickyard, you can't see it because the fence is blocking that view. And that led my mind thinking further that Minnesota Street where it goes down next to that old brickyard. If that was, by the brickyard was cleared out a little bit, you could actually see it from the trail as you're walking down the trail, read about it on the, uh, whatever that ca- sign is called and actually see it instead of having to hunt through the trees to find it.
So mayor and council, the, I mean, the Schroeder House is part of this discussion and I included that last PowerPoint we did. It currently has a wooden fence along the trail. I think that we're gonna re- restore the fence that was in the front up and down the street because that was basically all its property originally. And we can look at doing a more transparent fence along the trail. I think we need some separation from the trail so people just don't wander up if there's an event going on. But I think that something open is clearly doable.
And then would, would we be able to clear out the brush along that old? The brickyard is, that's kind of the side, isn't it? It's not the trail side, but it's the Minnesota Street side, which is alongside of that structure.
Kiln, mayor and council, um, the DNR is doing some research on how they ended up with that because there's some dispute with the adjoining property owner and there's some dispute about who controls Minnesota Street. And I know the city attorney, we've done some deep dives. There's some huge long-term property title issues running through this area. So we will try and get those resolved. But I think our goal is, if you think about the Schroeder House and the, let's call it the south side and the north side of the trail, that we do the south side today. But the north side, we have a separate grant from the DNR to do some things, but we're gonna work with, um, Mr. Jordan and our consultants on the riverfront because that, that area is included in that, um, side of the river needs to be cut back and some of those trees removed. So it returns back to a wa- a water area right now. Actually, I think the marina is higher than the current river level. So it's not gonna work very well. So we're gonna work with our Bolton and Mink, who's a consultant on that. It's kind of a separate project to, you know, long-term over the next three to four years, get the riverbank restored, figure out what to do with the marina to keep water in it and finish that. But the Schroeder House is a, the project we're talking about as part of this project to get that done, get the livery done and get the house done and get them up back in circulation and use. Because that will also help when people go down the trail, they can see these pieces and there will be the actual house, which I think will be kind of cool.
I'm talking about the brickyard.
Yeah. So the brickyard is buried between a piece the city owns and the DNR owns. It's currently a wildlife habitat for a nesting group of bald eagles. So along the trail on the northern side will be one of those augmented realities. If you look at it today, it's trees, but it will show what the brickyard used to look like. Just the foundations of those kilns remain.
Well, the kiln is on the other side of the trail. The old kiln used to be on the.
So there's a kiln, um, oven that's on the south side of the trail. But on the north side are the actual drying areas where they would dry the bricks and storm. And there were big sheds there. Those have all long gone. The foundations are still there and they're sort of on our property and on the DNR's property. But our concern is that's also a bald eagle nesting area that we don't want to go in there and cut trees down or disturb it. So as part of the longer range plan, we have a grant from the DNR to build a, uh, boardwalk kind of into that area with a turnaround so you can walk back and kind of see the nesting area without disturbing them.
Ms. Contreras?
Thank you, mayor. Um, just before I forget, you're, you are right there. It's, it's not free. Um, but we did get federal grant money from our delegation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And not long ago, um, co- um, Congress, um, our Congress, um, lady.
Congressperson Craig.
Angie Craig brought us a nice big check, which I believe is part of this, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct. So we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from, um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development under their economic development program because this is actually a history tourism project. And, um, we've also budgeted in the CIP for the Schroeder House and livery to get restored.
Three point five million, to be correct.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, but the, the, um, Angie Craig brought, um.
Yep, for the riverfront, it's three point five million, correct?
Right, but it's all, it's all pulled together. It's, it's not just for just the stabil- the stabilization. It's for the whole entire corridor, correct? Or is it just for this, um, stabilizing the river?
So the, the riverbank, separate project, we have three point five million dollars and eight point two six million from the state to stabilize the riverbank, which includes the north half of the trail of the brother Schroeder House.
Brings up a question.
Mr. Whiting?
Thank you. Um, are we gonna be doing these, this sign project after the stabilization project?
Mayor and council, no, we're actually gonna do it before because majority of them are up on this side. We're not on the actual riverbank, except I think in Huber Park, and we'll set those far enough back. The ones on the Schroeder property I noticed are all up on the trail portion. Um, because we haven't gotten the plan done yet for what happens at riverbank and what the marina looks like. So we don't really want to put anything down there.
It seemed those signs were, were gonna be movable, at le- they're on big rocks, but, uh, at least, uh, semi-portable, I guess, so you could say.
But then the funding has to be used by a certain date, the seven fifty for the signs. Um, last, another question I had was, do we know what the cost per year is gonna be on the? Are we gonna pay to replace these twenty years from now through park asset fund?
That would be correct, mayor. If they need to get replaced. I think the most fragile part of all of these are the porcelain panels. And we will get from the consultant estimate for their lifespan.
Pardon me?
The porcelain panels are the most fragile part of any of these, the fired part. Um, as Mr. Whiting, Councilmember Whiting said, uh, the ones that are down at the, um, trail now that the Heritage Society put in, they've held up pretty well. I mean, there's.
There were, if I might jump in, those were twenty-five year, I think, rated. And we were looking at the fifty-year rated. And I think that's what you're talking about.
And then our porcelain also?
Yeah, the porcelain ones are highly.
Yeah, I would say, mayor and council, the technology has advanced a lot in the past four or five years.
What I'm trying to calculate in my mind is eight hundred thousand dollars spread out over how many years to replace it? If it's twenty years, it's this much money per year going into the park asset fund for the future replacement. And, and what's that dollar amount per year in a park asset fund that this is gonna cost the Shakopee taxpayers?
So mayor and council will come up with from the consultant the lifespan is, and then we can do that calculation.
Okay.
And, and mayor and council, it'll be more than, that's their rough estimate. I think we have two million dollars in the current CIP because there's a lot of things they didn't account for, like some of the excavation work necessary. And so that's just the estimate they have right now. But I guarantee you, based on our construction costs here, it'll be more than that.
Did you say two million dollars for nine signs?
Currently in the capital improvement program, we budgeted two million to make sure that we didn't have to come back to you and say we were off. So they're at eight hundred and some odd thousand. Um, so we've budgeted out a park development total of two million dollars, including the seven fifty. Once we get these drawings done, we'll bid this out and we'll be back to you with what the real cost is.
Delaney? They just all coming out of park dollars or? Oh, I'm sorry. They're just all coming out of park dollars or?
Mayor and council, it's either out of park dollars or the seven hundred and fifty thousand we're getting from the federal government.
Anything else? Go ahead.
I'd like to circle back to the Schroeder House. If that was, is this an added discussion now?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna talk about that next or?
So mayor and council, this is what our plan is to restore the house back to. So we've worked, as you remember, this guy listed in the National Register Historic Places. And we've got a concept plan to restore it back to, um, this. And you can see there was originally kind of a fence line that ran down the street. And mayor and council, when we were talking about the area that's now the marina, this is basically it. So that's been filled in over the years by water. And here are the kiln areas that are on a mixture of DNR and city-owned property right now. So.
Drying sheds, not, not kilt.
Sorry. The drying sheds. And this is where, um, the foundations for all of this exist, along with the outbuilding in the back. So there's courtesy of the mayor, a picture where there actually were large boats in the marina. So our plan right now is to do everything right in this corner and everything, um, south of the trail. So restore the livery building, the Schroeder House, um, build this parking lot. And then we'll take a look at what that fence needs to look like. Right now, they're showing a historical replica of a fence across the back that would be more open.
Historic would be a buckthorn fence, you know, hedge. We can't do that, so.
So I included a cost estimate from last year. I think it was one point one or one point two million dollars from Lofler when they priced this out. Actually, the livery is the building that, um, the backside is deteriorating the most. So that will require the most work. The house is actually in fairly decent shape. If you remember from the discussion, we looked at these plans, basically making this a event meeting room and then taking over the, um, livery building into, um, restrooms and a, uh, area that can be rented out along with the area where a caterer can set up. And then again, these are all the areas that were pointed out as part of the study of where there's a lot of issues that need to be fixed, particularly on the backside.
If I could make a couple of comments on this.
Here, go ahead.
You know, I really think with these, uh, sign assets and the tourism increase that this could really be a focal point for people to either stop and park and get their bikes out or, you know, start, you know, come down to the, the site to enjoy an event or something like that. I, I would like to see it, uh, you know, engaged so that the, the building is used more often. And I would, you know, we have it as a public space, but, uh, maybe partnered with the Heritage Society or the County Historical Society so that they could put displays in it and, uh, maybe rotating displays. And then also use it for their meeting rooms and things like that. I'm not sure what we can do with the upstairs, but potential, uh, historic storage or something like that could be possible too. This is just, there's just so many points, uh, uh, that really spell out the brickyard. Each component that the brickyard ever made is in the house. So you could walk around that house and get a, get a great tour of history right there.
It's kind of the salesman's box.
Yeah, the whole salesman box, yeah. And the old, uh, the livery stable, uh, could be quite a nice little bike shelter, bike stop on your, on your tour or something like that. Uh, these biking communities and this tourism aspect is, is, uh, really, uh, something I think we're, we're, an untapped wealth that we're, we're just looking at.
Mayor and council, heritage tourism is probably one of the largest growth areas for tourism in the whole country right now. And I think this is a huge opportunity. We've talked with the SMSC, you know, they're gonna, they have groups right now that come to Hochekaati with bus groups that they would bring them then to Memorial Park and there would be things there. And then they could basically take the bus down to one end, they could walk, um, the trail. So it adds a whole new component that we just don't have today. I know beyond the CBB board, this is a big opportunity for them to have a new kind of tourism destination that's not necessarily entertainment, but it's more history.
Which adds to incredible, uh, opportunity, I think, for us.
Anybody else? Okay. Now where? Hold on?
That's it, sir.
All right, so. Twelve A, city bill list. On the bill list?
No questions.
B, which side we start last time, Mr. Lara?
His side. So we'll start over here. And I do not have any updates.
All righty. Councilor Contreras?
I don't have an update either.
Mr. Whiting?
Quick update on ridership. Uh, let's see here, we are at, uh, system-wide ridership is up twenty-seven percent for the MVTA. Um, over twenty twenty-two and comparatively, uh, for twenty twenty-three ridership totals are at forty-six percent of pre-COVID. So we're getting there.
Rebounding. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Delaney?
Okay, one sixty-nine coalition. We had our meeting eleven January. Uh, we discussed the need to set priorities and we'll have to, um, probably work with, uh, um, going out for bidding to figure out how to set the, our, set these priorities with, uh, I guess RFQ from a vendor that also helped. I think it was the I thirty-five coalition, similar to the one sixty-nine coalition. So we're gonna look at.
Going out on bids for what?
Uh, we're trying to set up priorities. So we're seeing what the one, the I thirty-five coalition did. So they're gonna bring back RFQ for what they did to, to get the other stakeholders involved, to figure out how to go from there.
Okay.
Um, we're the, talked about engaging other additional members, north and south, uh, mainly up around fifty-five. Get more membership, get more, um, I guess, um, more cities involved along the one sixty-nine. Um, also looked at our, our next meeting as far as summer, spring. And, um, our meeting at the Capitol, uh, to highlight our accomplishments for the past, um, I guess, construction. Uh, highlight that versus, uh, priorities since we don't have those set yet. As far as Spock, uh, we discussed potential water treatment sites. Um, still replacing the purple lights. If you see those around, it's about three hundred and fifty more to get, get replaced out of, I think, six hundred um, lights that were, are turning purple.
Can't repurpose them to the Prince, uh?
Easy, easy part.
They're gonna buy them from us.
Yeah, there you go.
There was a, a two-hour, I think outage in December, uh, that was due to a transformer. I think they got it taken care of. Um, just, I was wondering what caused that. And commissioner openings, there's two commissioner openings, openings. Um, and the, the current city commissioner said they are gonna reapply, but I think it's also advertised. So they are aware. Uh, I think they're both gonna reapply. So that is it.
I saw they had a water shutdown on Dakota five hundred block.
Yes.
Break a line?
I saw that advertised, but I don't have details.
Okay. My report, uh, Wednesday, January third, I was invited to the Shakopee River Valley Trailblazers, the snowmobile group that operates through town here. Um, Tuesday, the ninth, testified before the Metropolitan Governance Reform Task Force. And Thursday, what was the date? Auditor interview for the city's upcoming audit. Uh, that's all I have. Mr. Yes?
How did, uh, how did that Met Council thing go?
I thought it went good. Uh, there was testimony the, the whole time. I mean, there was more people than time to testify. It was two hours. Um, I was the second speaker. Um, our MBTA rep did a great job. He was there representing the, uh, transportation issue and pointing out, uh, the potential conflict of interest between the opt-outs and the, um, Met Council owned and operated. How a lot of times when they're trying to extend services to various areas, uh, you know, since they own and operate their own and they, they. They control the purse strings and the bidding process. So, um, very good points made by a couple of different, uh, um, transfer, transit providers that are outside of the Met Council. So, um, I thought it went well. Um, you'd have to ask anybody in attendance how my comments were taken, but, you know, said it as I, it's all right, like usual. I mean, uh, this council and past councils, and it is a scale priority that, uh, you know, that we wanna see some, some kind, type of reform in the Met Council to, uh, better represent the seven county uh, metropolitan area. And, you know, regardless of who's the governor or what party, when you're appointing them people, it's kind of a structural flaw. And I pointed that out, that if it's a Republican governor appointing all, uh, Met Council people, it's just perceived as political, whether it is or not. And vice versa for the other side. So, uh, I think the scale position. So, uh, I think the scale position was some sort of, uh, you know, have people from the seven counties, whether it's county commissioners or maybe council appoint somebody or whatever, some elected people. But you're still going to need the professionals on the transportation, MNDOT type and them kind of things too, so. I shared my testimony, not only with the Senate folks, uh, but with Mr. Reynolds too, so. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Kind of a nerve-wracking little experience, but, uh, you know.
I, uh, meant to, I was, I wanted to attend and I totally skipped my calendar. So when I decided it happened, I was like, no, I wanted to go, but-
I was very surprised at how, how well-attended it was. Matter of fact, the panel pointed out that it's, you know, a lot of comments, a lot, a lot of attendance. Um, and they heard a lot of different things than what they heard from the bigger urban city settings. So they're getting it from-
The hot topic.
Getting a lot of different input, which is always good. So, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, nothing for me.
All right. Any other business? Item number 13, Mr. Whiting.
Uh, other business, uh, we had talked about, uh, at one point, uh, going back to the plan of changing off on our interviewing of directors and, uh, staff, senior staff members. And I'm not, wondering if we had come to a consensus on that.
Yeah, I, I was actually going to bring that up under other business, uh, just trying. We have three director positions open. Uh, I just need to know from council who you want to be on the panel, um, representing council. Ever since I've been here, I've thought it's very important to have a representative from council. In the past, we have rotated that, uh, but I'm just trying to get clarification on what this body wants and we will make it happen.
One thing I don't understand is we have two council people for boards and commissions and one for department heads, which pretty much all department heads work for council. And I was, uh-
But department heads actually work for me, sir.
Right.
I work for you.
Okay. And I was, well, I'm, I'm looking at it from a standpoint that department heads are pretty important compared to, you know, an appointed board or commission, right? I, I was thinking about this and I was, and this is just one thing that came to mind is we all know what we're looking for in maybe a department head, and maybe we should share that with staff. Three top things you want for each, out of each department head that's, that we're looking to fill. And then have staff bring the two top back and let's have a full council discussion with the two inter- individuals. And, uh, council can decide.
I'm not sure I want to put a candidate through that, but, uh-
Well, we, we do, we do a city administrator.
No, I, I would think that the mayor would be-
But this is different than a city administrator. This is a department head. And, and the city administrator works directly for you and should go through that. Uh, the department heads do not work directly for you. Um, they work for me. Uh, and, you know, the reality is, is that, you know, anytime any of you have any input on, on whether something is good with a department or something you're looking for, I would hope and encourage that you would pass that along, um, and we'll incorporate that. And, uh, uh, I don't know what the status was before I got here, but, uh, ever since I've been here, I've wanted, uh, some input from council on those decisions before we bring them forward.
Yeah, my vote would be for one council member rotating. And if the mayor wanted to have a meeting with candidates, I wouldn't have a problem with that on the side, you know, on his own meeting. Or after they were, were down to a pool or something like that.
I, I mean, see, I don't really have a set way, so if you want to rotate it, that's fine. The only problem I have with that is, is one, am I going to be able to represent everybody's position with, with a candidate?
Well, but that's not, that's not the purpose of having council on the interview panel, sir. It's to, it's to give, uh, a council member the opportunity to see what we're doing to implied input for that particular candidate. There's no way that, you know, one person is going to be able to reflect because we're looking for the best person, not what you specifically want or what-
Right.
Uh, Councilman Laura specifically wants. And, and, um, yeah, I don't, you know, want to politicize this.
Right.
We want it to be based upon the merits and based upon, you know, who the best candidate is.
So I guess that's my position. And if we could, uh, my, my thought would be to poll the, poll the council here and see where they're all at.
Well, it's-
That, that would be the three votes.
Council, council member Delaney and I are already doing boards and commissions, so-
Right.
It'd kind of be one of you three, I think, for, but then you have, you have three different positions, right?
All five of us should rotate.
Yeah, we do have three positions coming up.
Okay, well, fire?
HR Director.
HR?
Fire.
Uh, Park Rec.
Park and Rec. Oh, yes. Uh, is my Park and Rec Director.
She chimed in quite quickly.
Chimed in. Not that she's trying to get rid of the hat.
Down twice, so fire, park rec, and HR, right? All right.
Would you like to take one of them?
Pick one. I'm probably not the guy for the fire because I don't have any experience with fire, but, uh, but we're not looking at that, right? I don't care. What do we want to do?
I, are we deciding on who sits on what or if it should rotate?
Would you like to sit on one of those?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't, I, to me, it doesn't matter which one.
Well, we're going to give you one then.
Yeah, it's fine. Pick one.
Give him Park and Rec.
Sure, I'll do Park and Rec. Yep.
I, I wouldn't mind fire.
Mayor, if, if it matters, we have the Park and Direct, Park and Rec Director interviews, um, set. They're January 24th, so if there's a scheduling conflict.
That might matter.
Good point.
Yep.
Thank you.
None of the other ones have firm dates set, but that one does.
What time?
Uh, just in the morning. We think there'll be a panel at nine and a panel at 10:00.
Sure. That works.
Wednesday, 24th?
Yep.
And I have no interest in HR, sorry.
You want to, you're going to do fire?
Oh, I'd like fire, yeah.
Mr. Uh, Delaney, comments?
Please. Uh, no comments, so.
Did you, did you want one of those?
Um, if no one else wants to take it, that's totally fine.
What, HR?
Which one of you two would like to do HR?
Actually, with HR, you probably should be excused.
Yeah, maybe not.
Okay.
Unless we switch.
As long as it's on a Tuesday.
Oh, so you said for, you're right, um, for Park and Rec, what day again, remind me?
January 24th.
24th.
It's a week from tomorrow.
Okay, I just have to, and times, times please?
Uh, be in the morning, probably nine to 11.
Nine to 11?
Okay, because I do have to take that day off from work. Okay. Yeah.
You want that? Okay. You're going to do HR?
I'll do HR.
Then you're up next.
Oh, you're doing fire, that's it?
Well, then, it, it won't happen again, that's right. You're right. Sorry, I don't, I'm not-
Hopefully it will not happen again.
Yeah, sorry. But you would be if it happens, something.
Only for engineering, that's.
And if, if I can get a, a, a list of when you have the top two finalists, I wouldn't mind meeting them. I'm not going to stay for the whole interview.
We could arrange for a, a brief interview after the panels, if you'd like.
There you go.
Or the meet and greet.
Yeah. All right, so we got that straightened out?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's see here. Item number 14, we'll take a motion, a motion notating the Minnesota State Statu- oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, I just want to thank whoever put the packet together that put the, uh, EDA up front finally. Usually it's buried in the back and this, it made it really stand out this week. I didn't have to dig through 500 pages of, so thank you for doing it.
You didn't si- staple it to the city bill list?
Yes, it wasn't stapled.
You know, with, uh, packets like this, I'm going to have to get a bigger stapler.
Can I go into number 14? Ready?
Any other business?
No.
Okay, item number 14, and we need to read that statute for the record, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations according to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subdivision B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Contreras, seconded by Councilor Delaney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Discussion, discussion, seeing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're in closed session for labor negotiations.
Jim, I mean, they got a nice show.
All right, let's reconvene Shakpe City Council, coming out of closed session with no action was taken. And anything else from council? Laura?
I think that would lead to adjournment to Tuesday, February 6th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is what I motion.
Second.
And second, any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.